Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Lindsay Ryan.
Here.
Hillpern.
Here.
Cartha.
Here. Rebecca, you've got the approval of the meeting agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Chow.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hillpern.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. My sincere apologies for the late start this evening, but also welcome back and Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome to our first Board meeting of 2020. And we get to start off with one of my favorite parts of our Board meetings with our high-five recognition. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it right over to you, Phil.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing two very dedicated employees for their outstanding work and service to our students and schools. We're deeply grateful to Byline Bank for their continued support of the High Five program. Through their sponsorship, each recipient will receive a $100 gift card, a frame recognition certificate, and invite to a celebratory luncheon for all year's recipients in May. Just as a reminder, all members of our community are able to submit a nomination via our online form located at D-65 and in our Fast Five Community Newsletter. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing two very dedicated employees. The first one is Ms. Pilar Ramos, and the second one is Ms... A round of applause on that one. And the second person we have is Ms. Cecilia. We know her better as Selena. Thank you very much. Ms. Ramos, we'll start with Ms. Ramos first, is responsible for teaching some of our youngest learners here in kindergarten, right next door here at King Arts. She has been a part of District 65 family for the past two years and was nominated by one of her students and her parent. Mr. Chusset is here tonight with his daughter and has prepared a few remarks for us. We'd like to welcome them up to the podium and share your remarks. Here we go.
Hi, Board, thank you. Hi, Ms. Ramos. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, high five. We moved here last summer for the great schools, and we are overjoyed and impressed with the community and our teacher. Ms. Ramos has done an extraordinary job working with students from all different levels of learning readiness to build community, where students help one another, and they all enjoy songs, cheers, hand motions, and activities to help them prepare how to read. In just a couple of months into the school year, my kindergartner, Sammy, was doing math and understanding mathematical concepts. She was sending out words to read and write and becoming a confident student. She's already writing sentences now. It's amazing. In addition to classroom knowledge, the values that Ms. Ramos has helped instill in her students, like responsibility, engagement, confidence, cooperation, and courage, is really uncanny. I also enjoy how Ms. Ramos keeps students' families informed of activity through traditional and electronic communications, and engaged parents to volunteer in all sorts of different capacities, like the Fall Fest celebration, mystery readers, and especially face painting. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, high five.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for sharing. It's very apparent the incredibly positive impact that Ms. Ramos is having on our students, and we deeply appreciate all that she does, day in and day out, for all our families at 65. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ramos. Next, we have the pleasure of recognizing... Oh, Ms. Ramos, would you like to make a few comments? Thank you. Why don't you come up to the podium if you would? Just give us your comments.
Okay, well, this is very intimidating. No, I just wanted to... Thank you so much, and I... Obviously, I adore working here at King Arts. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Mary Belay, Mary Young. She was my student, I studied and taught with her, and then I wouldn't be here if Chrissy didn't have this little girl, Annie, because then I did her maternity leave 10 years ago, moved back east, and then came back last year. So thank you so much, and that's all. Bye.
Next, it's my pleasure that we can recognize a dear colleague who works right here in JEH, and that is Selena. Selena, if you'd please stand up. Selena's been a member of the Buildings and Grounds team for the past 16 years as part of the D-65 family. She was nominated by one of our staff members and District 65 Grants Manager, Kim Kelly. Unfortunately, Kim was planning on coming tonight but was unable to attend. But I'd like to have Selena come up to the podium and like to read to you some of the comments that Kim made about you. The entire JEH Buildings and Grounds team are the heart and soul of our building. Without them, we do not know how the work could be done for that. For the High Five, I would like to nominate Cecilia for above and beyond all the work that she does. She cares for this building like her own home, and probably more importantly, she cares for all the people, and it's like a family for her, and I think we'd all agree with that. Much of her work is behind the scenes, but we see it in the conference room set up for our meetings, shoveled sidewalks in the morning after snow, and clean carpets after a three-day weekend. All of these things are easy to take for granted because our buildings run so smoothly, but they really represent a tremendous amount of effort that she does for us with well. The quality of her work, I would describe as being impeccable, and I think we'd all agree with that, and it's done with great detail and attention because she cares about the people that she works with and going to school every day with that. I'm very happy to nominate Selena for this award as an excellent example of her wonderful colleague. Selena, would you like to make a few comments for us?
Thank you very much. I'm happy to... I love work for District 65.
Thank you very much. And now, at this time, if we could have both of our recognition members come up, we'd like to take a photo and present you with a certificate.
Thank you, everybody. Such a wonderful way to start off 2020. Do we have any other...
That's all the recognitions at this time. Thank you.
Are there any Board comments?
I do know that Sergio, who could not be here later tonight, wanted us to remind the Board and the public about the importance of the census count coming up. And so we'll make sure there's information on our website to that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent point.
Three years ago, I reviewed my first District 65 Achievement and Accountability Report as a District 65 Board Member. I mentioned at the time, via an email that I sent out later that week, "Early last week, I received a beautiful card reminding me to be a dandelion seed. Small but powerful, working in partnership with many. That same day, I took the time to slow down and play at the beach in the sun and cold with my little ones. And later that day, I participated in a difficult yet important Board conversation about student achievement." At that meeting that I was referring to, I believe I used the word "demoralizing" in relation to the outcomes that we reviewed. And to be honest, I felt similarly when reviewing the numbers that we see in tonight's report, primarily because I know they do not reflect the true aptitude of Black children and families. And I personally know the pain of being under-invested in and underestimated and subsequently internalizing wrong messages, and the pain and frustration of exclusion in the education institution. And I know now that those feelings and experiences were undeserved and unjust. I truly believe it's our responsibility as a community to ensure that disparities in outcomes and experiences in our schools that are predictable by race as the vestiges of 400 years of institutionalized oppression and dehumanization by design are no more. It is our opportunity and responsibility to repair. And as our community embarks on a conversation at our city about repair that is due in response to centuries of plundering of marginalized communities, I've been reflecting on what repair looks like at District 65. If budgets are moral documents, repair looks like investing in reducing harm and ensuring healing. Our investing in a Black student success team is an investment. Reducing disparities... Or, excuse me, reducing punitive discipline practices and contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline is repair. Hiring our next superintendent through a racial equity lens and elevating the prominence of marginalized voices that in the past have been invalidated is a gesture towards repair. Seeing our discipline numbers decline and the racial gap in them is encouraging. Though we need to see similar in-kind changes in the outcomes that we see, demonstrating children's access to academic achievement, we need to see a close in the gap in opportunity to achieve. District 65, Evanston, Skokie Public Schools are our schools too, as the Black community. We invest and we demonstrate faith and trust in District 65 every day when we send our children to school. And we, the Black community, have every right to expect gestures of repair. The close in the racial predictability of the gap in opportunity to achieve in District 65 is a moral obligation, and I'm eager to discuss the Achievement and Accountability Report, as well as hear the plans for how we as a district will respond with urgency and deliberateness, and how we will deploy resources and invest our time and energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Anja. Anybody else?
Yes. So I just wanted to, as we review the data tonight, I want to invite the community to look at this as a measure of our community health. And as you look at it as a measure of our health, there are some things that we can celebrate, but there's also a lot of things that we need to pay attention to. And rather than jump immediately to, you know, to pointing fingers at the immediate culprit that is the school district for the responsibility of educating our children, just to remember that we as a community play an incredible role in educating all of our children. And so as we review the data, just for everybody to think, what role do we each play in the health of our community, especially the health of our children? With that, I want to invite the community to the 2020 Year of Kindness and Nonviolent Action Kickoff Event, January 26. This is an exciting initiative about the transformative power of the arts, which will be kicked off Sunday, January 26, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, which recently got a facelift. If you haven't seen it, I invite everybody to go check it out. But also, I think this is an opportunity, again, to create community, to visit with your neighbors. It's very easy to point fingers and hold other people responsible for the health of our community, again, specifically the health and well-being of our children. And so I invite you to this event, and I invite you to just consider how you can play a role in helping our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, Sergio. We... Phil was sure to mention your comment about the census and the importance of filling out the census, and that we'll have some information up on the website later on.
Yeah. Again, just to reiterate, I really think it's important that we as a community, right, try to get all of ourselves counted. It's also fiscally responsible, and it's part of our job, right, as Board members, to really make sure that our families are counted, because, again, it's federal funding, you know, title funding, as well as funding for bilingual services. Again, we can't afford to lose any of that type of money, any of that money. And one of the things that we've heard is from the census folks and some of the research authors that the kids, the people who get most undercounted are children and infants, like kiddos, right? So it's from zero to five. So whatever we can do to work with JEH and all our different principals and all different buildings to have a census night is critical. I know the State Board of Education has just released a toolkit for school districts to utilize to help plan census nights at local schools, so some really good stuff out there for us to work on and a template for us to help.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, we will move on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the Board during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air specific concerns about staff members, being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact-finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to follow district communication guidelines found in the Student Handbook. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the Board. Our first speaker will be Tom Sims.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sims. I'm a member of the We Can Local civic organization dedicated to promoting and protecting our democracy. I also taught social studies in District 65 for 28 years. My experience and current research prompts me to urge this Board to immediately set the highest priority on a strong civic education for K-8 students. This emphasis is crucial to support Evanston's focus on equity in our schools. Without it, we'll continue to leave students out of the mainstream of political power. For decades, approximately half of our students have been graduated without the tools and interest to participate in our democracy. This is most apparent in the dismally low percentage of people who vote, and even lower number of people who make the effort to identify and debate issues, to consider political options, and to develop a perspective. How do we, how does the Board, reverse this longstanding trend of non-participation? What can be done to equitably empower all students to receive the opportunities afforded to committed students as they fulfill their responsibilities? The good news is that current social studies curriculum does already contain the information needed to address the problem. Starting in kindergarten, where children learn the concept of community and the roles of community members, throughout all the grades, students learn our history and our government structure and roles. Unfortunately, there's a disconnect between knowing about the government and participation in that government because students are not actively engaged in our civic education. Students are taught the difference between fact and opinion, truth versus falsehood. But they must also be taught to apply their knowledge and skills within the context of actual current events. They must be taught to develop their own viewpoint while developing their critical thinking and communication skills. Current event classroom discussions should teach students not only to understand what is happening in the world, but to debate positions and to evaluate arguments and to identify their own self-interest. Equally important, students should be made aware of and hold respect for divergent opinions and respect for the people who hold those opinions. Today, District 65 is rightfully focused on equity. The research supports that a strong civics education is an excellent path toward that justice. As District 65 goes through the process of reviewing its social studies curriculum, it is vital that civics education be given a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Asher... Oh, thank you. Asher King Yariv? I'm sorry, I can't read the...
Can I start?
Welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Asher King Yariv, and I am in 7th grade at Nichols Middle School. If I've noticed one thing about Nichols, it's overcrowding. The signs are everywhere, in the halls, in the classroom, in the cafeteria, and even outside of school. My teachers are great, but this complication seriously affects the learning environment in number of ways. First off, it is a strong incentive for violence and obscenity. As I've heard many a kid jokingly say, "There should be a witness protection program at Nichols." Though a joke, the idea rings true. Teachers cannot monitor the 257th graders, and neither can they always deliver justice in school. Oftentimes, kids are either too scared of the repercussions or of being a tattletale to speak up. This only incentivizes bullies to continue as they know it is hard for them to get caught. Violence is bad in any instance, but it is especially bad where there's too much happening for it to properly be controlled. A friend of mine once missed two periods of class after getting choked because it was too chaotic to discern what was happening, and those who knew something decided not to tell because of the previous reasons. It also seriously disrupts the learning environment, as I have learned all too frequently from my classes. I am in a 28-kid algebra class, and it's hard for the teacher to monitor. I will admit I am not one of the quietest of kids, but I am also not the chatty-est. I've had multiple bad experiences in classes like L.A. Drama, where I have been asked to say obscene things, been poked, and my personal space has been seriously violated. The sad truth of it is, it has happened so often that it has almost become a regular occurrence. This also leads to iPads, which I have nothing against, however, they lead to people playing games, and even the simplest things can distract, such as playing music. This is caused by overcrowding, as iPads are the easiest yet most dangerous way to cater to the masses. What do we do if there aren't social workers or teachers? I now try to avoid eating in cafeteria due to the mad rush for seats, the rushed eating, and the stressed-out lunch recess supervisors caused because of the mass amount of kids eating. This is only some of the backlash that I've noticed from overcrowding. I do like my school, but solving this issue would make schools safer and make the learning environment more enriching and profitable for everyone. I like my school, I like my teachers, and I would like things to be better for everyone. How much time do I have left?
As much as you want.
So this is an important issue to me because if we do not solve overcrowding, then schools will not be a safe place for kids, and they will be scared to talk about it. And that is what I have to say about overcrowding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Cutter?
Hi, I'm Julie Cutter, and I have a 7th grader at Nichols. As one of the authors of the letter that you received last Friday on the enrollment issue at Nichols, I mostly want to reiterate that we've done the best that we can to come up with a set of proactive suggestions based on the fairly limited statistical information that we have on other schools' enrollment, ideal building capacities, and overall growth patterns. As the letter states, "We, and I, appreciate that there was some dialogue over this past summer with Mr. Harry's about potential permissive transfers, but in my view, this is one tactical piece of what must be a broader and strategic set of discussions and decisions." I'd also like to state, and I'm fairly sure I'm speaking for the almost 250 people who signed the letter that you, or the signature page that you received, that this is in no way an attempt to get more for Nichols or disadvantage any of the other schools, middle schools, in any way. It's about making decisions and enacting policies that are sensible and provide optimal learning environments for all of District 65 middle school students. As our letter outlines, we as parents and guardians believe that the answers are out there, but there must be a will to find them. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Wilson?
I'm Jeremy Wilson. In past years, the Accountability Report was essentially a report to the Board, which allowed you to evaluate the success of the district's educational programs. This does not. Under the Freedom of Information Act, I've submitted a request to Ms. Khorarishi for the following information. One, the percent of students meeting developmental reading assessment benchmarks for spring 2019 for each grade K-1, 2, and 3 by demographic group, essentially Table 4 in the 2018 report, but for each grade. Two, the same results for the mathematics test given Pearson-G made. The percent of entering kindergarten students defined as kindergarten-ready on ISEL at entry for fall 2019 by demographic group, Table 3 in the 2018 report. Four, the percent of kindergarten students in grades 1 and 2 meeting ISEL standards in spring 2019 by demographic group, ISEL quotation marks, is administered to students in kindergarten through grade 2, as stated in the 2018 report. I am asking the Board to support my request.
Thank you. Marsha Richmond?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Richmond, and I am the president of the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, Hertufor IWSC. I'm here to speak to you about our early head start contract with District 65. We are currently preparing for a five-year renewal of the contract and have some concerns which have been expressed to the staff and some Board members. Our organization has been at the cutting edge for infants and toddler care since 1913. I am here tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors and children and families we serve, most of whom live in the 2nd and 5th wards. We have three programs: Baby-Toddler Nursery on Main Street, which houses 72 children in daycare, Teen-Baby Nursery in the Family Focus Building, where we serve 16 infants and toddlers, and Family Support Home Visiting. I know most of you were not around five years ago when, at the 11th hour, after months of negotiations and draft budgets, we were asked to cut our proposed budget for the contract. contract. Both District 65 and IWSE were new to the partnership. IWSE was to become a delegate with 55 slots and the district would be the administrator and hold 34 slots. What we found after the contract was signed by our new Executive Director, Stevens Vick, in September 2015 was that we had to pay for required services such as a nurse, a disability specialist, and a few other positions that had previously been covered by our contract with CNE. We soon found ourselves rearranging our agency budget to meet these new financial burdens. Over the past five years, we have increased our fundraising by 30% and maintained the hallmark of high-quality care for which IWSE is known. But it isn't enough to make up the difference. This was in revision up until a few minutes ago. In February 2019, our staff and board members met with District 65 personnel to get a jumpstart on preparations for renewal of the contract. IWSE's staff and board met again with district staff in November of 2019 in preparations for submitting a budget proposal for Federal Region 5 of Head Start. We discovered in October of this past year that we are receiving 30% less than the district for reimbursement of the same population for the 2nd, 5th, and 8th wards. The district reimburses themselves at a rate of $13,000 per child while we get $10,000 per child. Why? We are the district's representatives in the 5th ward. We see this as an equity issue. How do you see it? We understand you're under intense financial constraints, but we have been dipping into our reserves over the past three years and we can't sustain that operating style long term. This is a hardship for us and in the long run will be a hardship for the district if the 55 children we serve do not receive early intervention services that we all deem so valuable. We are asked, I'm almost done, we are asked for what is fair and equitable for the district to meet its own equity standard. IWSE is currently receiving 30% less than the average across the region and 25% less than the overall average for the entire state of Illinois. We look forward to future negotiations for a proposed renewal slash extension of the five-year contract and we hope that in the future, we can be more than just subcontractors. We can be partners in the education of Evanston's youngest and neediest children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Sammy? Diane LaQuire?
I'm Diane LaQuire. I'm a former District 65 parent and I live at 1219 Greenwood. Tonight's Achievement and Accountability Report notes that there's been a downward trend in kindergarten readiness among our incoming elementary school students as indicated by ISEL scores. And ISEL might not be an ideal measure, but I think it's a decent proxy for early learning skills, certainly. The decline in scores is disheartening because those early skills are foundational for K-3 learning and beyond. I'd like to use my time just to highlight for everybody the many members of our community who are working to impact kindergarten readiness and are your partners in this. As co-chair of Evanston Cradle to Career's Learning on Track Team, I've had the good fortune to work in recent years with preschool directors and teachers, District 65 administrators, teachers, and many of you board members, parents of young children, high school advocates for action, home daycare providers, and numerous EC2C partners. We're all leaning in to help children, all children, have a strong start to kindergarten. It's a big task and District 65 is so critical. Your leadership is important. Tonight's introductory memo says an in-depth analysis of kindergarten readiness will be a topic at a future board meeting, and I think it will probably address those demographic questions that have come up. I encourage you to share the learnings from that analysis widely with your Evanston Cradle to Career partners, with the Early Childhood Council, with the 60 sponsors of lifting up early childhood here in Evanston, and others. If it's appropriate, please use the findings to update the Strong Start to Kindergarten Goals for Educators document that Stacy's team helped draft in 2016. About 25% of incoming kindergarten students are served by JEH preschool programs. Another 50% are served by 25-ish other preschools in the area. They can be our partners, too. It's a reasonable goal to have outreach to all the preschool programs and the families they serve while children are 3 to 5 and even before that. We have evidence that early childhood educators, parents, and caregivers are eager to build kindergarten skills. Over 100 early childhood educators, home daycare providers, and kindergarten teachers have attended each EC2C Pre-KK Summit. Last summer, 49 preschool teachers submitted kindergarten transition forms to support over 360 rising kindergarten students. And recipients of the Advocates for Action grants had 30 parents of color show up to talk specifically to ask for information about kindergarten readiness and the Strong Start to Kindergarten guide. Our whole community should know to talk, read, sing with children from birth. Adults should hear from teachers and their neighbors that important kindergarten skills include not only letter and number recognition, but self-regulation, speaking and listening, drawing and sorting, asking questions, and building relationships. It would be fantastic to talk as a whole community with a unified voice about what skills will help our young learners have a strong start to kindergarten at District 65. Working with Evanston partners requires scarce resources, I know, but this is an area where that investment can bring real dividends for our students. And Anya, you asked, think about what you can do, and I know my whole team over at Cradle to Career is asking, what can we do? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Lang? Oh, okay. And then Meg Cruley.
Happy New Year, everyone. Pardon me for a moment. Evening. My name is Meg Cruley and I'm the President of the District Educators Council, representing over 750 educators in our district. I identify as a white female and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I would like to thank the Rad Department for their efforts and the revisions for the formatting of the Accountability and Achievement Report. It certainly represents a broader vision of what defines student success and an ease of accessibility to the information. Certainly, it also shows that we have a lot of work that everyone, both from community and working together, to improve our student outcomes. I also want to say that DEC is in support of the memo submitted tonight for the decision about geometry being solely provided by District 65 for our core middle schools. DEC has stated for many years that we know our educators in our district are highly qualified and have the same certifications as the teachers at the high school. In addition, we believe that it will support an ease and streamlining in scheduling and programming for the students who are in those classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to our biz. You've got the action item?
Yep. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the track movement appeal, personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, dismissal of nonlicensed staff, December 2019 Board of Education meeting minutes, December 2017 destruction of closed session audio recording, November 2019 list of bills, treasurer's report, and budget amendment gift acceptance for Dewey School.
Second.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Hale Pern?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And now we will move on to our discussion item, the Achievement and Accountability Report.
Thank you very much. The 2019 report that the board has in front of them includes the revisions that were proposed and discussed at the September board meeting, and it's my understanding also at the last board meeting in January from the previous year based on the 2018 report. The presentation this year is a little bit different in that it will include both the district report, but also the school-level profile reports. We would like to, first of all, compliment Kylie and your team for the great work that you have done, and also Melissa Messenger who's done a fantastic job of collaborating together to develop this document to provide tonight. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kylie.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you. That's great. You have the clicker? I've got it. I've got it covered. So, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to share kind of this report and the school reports with you all. I'm excited to have a dialogue about these reports. I'm going to start just with a brief overview. I would like to build on what Phil was saying. This report would not have been possible without the contributions from our school leaders, from our educators, from my colleagues in Cabinet, from Melissa Messenger, who has been an incredible thought partner in thinking through how to make this report visually appealing. I can do data charts and tables all day, but making something a stunning, stunning work that reflects the vibrancy of our community is something that she really helped breathe life into, so. So, as you all know, this data reflects last year, and so it's the school year 2018-2019. We have for you all today and for the community, the district report, which includes the data on the achievements and accomplishments, qualitative data this year on some of the achievements and accomplishments of our students, our educators, our school principals, and other district administrators, and our community partners. We've also added some additional data on key measures and added the new school profile reports. So, that's where I'm going to begin. I'm going to start talking about the school profile reports. So, for our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our magnet schools, we have school reports that reflect their school's data and information. So, each school has their own customized report that includes the school's mission or vision or the school norms, things that were important to the school community, as well as their data. And the data is the school-level data provided in the same form as the district data, so they're really complementary to one another. And we've included in each report some data that wasn't previously available, including showing the disaggregated data by demographics and adding in information boxes to help families and community members understand what these different measures indicate and why we're using them to communicate about student outcomes. So, in addition, we have the district report. The district report includes all of the aforementioned accomplishments and achievements, and I will say these are from across all of the schools in our district, and they really represent a vast range of different areas. We also made sure we had the same district-level data provided to match the same data visualizations and demographic kind of breakouts as the school profile reports. We have also included the same information boxes to help situate the data and make sure that people have a shared understanding of what the data means and how to use it for informing what they're learning about the school community. Now, I could go on all night about all of the amazing accomplishments included in these pages. We initially had planned to just have one page of student accomplishments, but there were so many really remarkable things and leadership opportunities, educational opportunities that were provided throughout our schools, including things like the arts, STEM, student-led initiatives, out-of-school learning, sports team, chess team, rock band performances, Battle of the Books, debate, programs that were student-led mentoring of other students, students-leading charity drive to raise funds for really meaningful charities within our school community. And the accomplishments are really diverse and far-ranging. We also included pages highlighting just a fraction of the accomplishments of our educators in our school buildings and our school leaders. These are the sorts of contributions that really help create remarkable learning environments that value the wide range of skills and learning that we want our students to have to promote long-term success. We also had an opportunity to include some of the community contributions. I would love to see us expand this because I know there are so many more wonderful organizations and partners in our community who maybe weren't represented in this year's report, but we wanted to really make sure we had a space to acknowledge and highlight all of the different achievements that are part of what brings learning to life here in Evanston. We also made sure to include the preface from the prior reports about how to interpret data with a lens for equity. I think that this is really important for us to maintain and help situate our data and information. As I had mentioned, I think back in September, maybe it was November, one of the many months that I've been presenting this year to this board, this was something that drew the attention of the Houston Independent School District, and they actually modeled their equity statement about how to use educational data after the equity statement included in this report. Now, I'd like to talk about the quantitative data portion of the report. So, I've just talked about all the qualitative information that was included, and now we're going to briefly touch on some of the quantitative data. I included in the memo some of the trends and highlights and data points for your consideration, and I'm providing a summary here. So, it's very similar to the same picture that we saw last year that we know is a call to action, as Meg mentioned. Still, a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of improving and addressing the opportunity gap. These continue to be a consistent area of focus across all of our different data points. We really see that the percent of students especially meeting college readiness benchmarks is a particular area where the gaps are most pronounced. Kindergarten readiness rates continue to be an area of focus. We have an ongoing decline in that area, and as mentioned earlier, we will be bringing a more in-depth analysis to this board at a subsequent board meeting. Sorry. So, now I'd like to talk very briefly about the students making expected gains on MAP. So, what we see, thank you, is that the overall trend in the data is fairly stable across the years. We see a small improvement for Latinx students and English language learners. I would like to note that this is based on the NWEA meeting expected gains measure. What this measure shows is the percent of students who made or met or exceeded their projected growth, which is based on the average growth of students who are at similar performance levels. I will also add, I think it's notable, to say this growth measure isn't aligned to a specific threshold or benchmark. This is based on the national sample of students, and so it's about student growth. So, we wanted to make sure we had both a growth measure in the report and an attainment measure, because when you're trying to understand and interpret the assessment data, you want to be using both. It's not sufficient to just have student growth be the focus because attainment matters as well, especially for things like college access and access to, you know... you want to make sure students have high attainment and are also experiencing growth. So you look at those two measures together to get a sense of what your picture looks like. I also want to mention that the MAP assessment is for grades two to eight, and only math in the second grade. It's not administered in grades kindergarten and first, or in second grade in reading. So the growth measures here include students in grades four to eight for English language arts, and three to eight for math. And one thing that I'd like to call attention to on this data visualization, we, we wanted to create a way to see all of the student subgroups together. Instead of having different tables and having to kind of look through and flip through different things, or having a bar chart that only represented a small set of the information, we wanted to create a visualization that included all of the student subgroups and demographic groups together, so that you could get a sense of those changes over time. One thing that we added is this shading here that you can see. We have a district-wide suppression threshold of 10, so if there are fewer than 10 students in any subgroup, we don't show that data, and that's in order to protect student confidentiality and privacy. That's a, it's a common thing throughout all places, and, and it's a protection, federal protection for students, and statewide protection for students. One thing, though, is that when we still have subgroups that are fairly small in this district, so they might have 11 students or 12 students in them, and so we added this shading to show if the group of students in the specific demographic group is between 10 to 20 students. At some schools, where subgroups may be in that 12 to 13 student range, if there's a change that affects a small number of students, you can see the percentages shift wildly. And it looks like things are getting remarkably better, or remarkably worse. And it's not necessarily something that is related to a remarkable change in performance. It's really because the group of students is so small that individual outliers really affect the average. And so we wanted a way, because of the nuance of Evanston, and the fact that some of our schools do have smaller groups of students, we wanted a way to kind of highlight the places where these trends might be the result of a small end size of students. And so that's why we've added that. And I've gotten really positive feedback from a lot of the school leaders about adding that facet in, because it helps them to articulate to their school community why some of those shifts might look really large. So on this next chart, we see the same information about which kind of percents of students making expected gains on MAP, except this is for math. And so it's a complementary chart. Again, we see here a decline in the percent of students making expected gains across almost every group of students. Now, we'll closely monitor this, and we want to keep an eye on this, but something just Here, we are looking at students making college readiness benchmarks on MAP. Again, this is the attainment kind of measure for MAP, and it's a marker for, you know, students who are meeting the expected benchmark that puts them on the pathway for college access. And what we see, we had looked at this data last year, and we were concerned that the trend was flat or declining. Here, we do see some areas where the, there are improvements, specifically for Black, Latinx, and multiracial students. So we do see a slight uptick that helps us understand that maybe that flat or declining trend is, is not necessarily a flat or declining trend, because we see some improvement. Here, again, for math, we see consistent levels, and again, the improvement for Black and multiracial students, some slight improvements for English language learners, but gaps between the groups continue to be really significant. And I will also say, the gaps for our students with IUPs are also significant, and something that we have to be aware of and be monitoring. Here, we have the ISEL data. As previously noted, this will be the subject of a future analysis that we are going to bring to the board. We do see a continued trend in this data, downward trajectory. I want to note a couple of things that I indicated in our memo, but I just want to reiterate for those who may not have had the opportunity to read the memo. So what this data reflects is, the ISEL is an assessment that's done at the beginning of kindergarten. It's a kindergarten readiness sort of scan, right? It's a, it's a screener, and it's something that is used to get a sense on how students are performing across the different dimensions that the subtests measure. So this data reflects five dimensions: alphabet recognition, phonemic awareness, one-to-one matching, story listening, and letter sounds. And it's important to note that in the 2019 school year, we had several schools that are participating in the step pilot, and those schools do not administer the ISEL screener. And so between 2018 and 2019, we see a decline in the number of students that are taking the screener, that are being administered the screener, from 821 students in 2018 to 585 students in 2019. We have analyzed the data to see if maybe what is occurring within this is a factor of the change in population. So we ran the numbers without those schools and compared those trends over time. We do not think that the change in the population is what is resulting in this downward trend. And so it is definitely something that I want to highlight, and that we intend to bring the analysis, and I know I keep saying that, but I want to reassure you and the members of our early childhood community that this is a critical thing that we are looking at, and we do hope to bring it not only to the board, but also to the members of Evanston Cradle to Career, and that's something that we've been already planning for and discussing internally. Now, I'd like to touch briefly on the DRA. So what we see here is that we have maintained the percent of students meeting the DRA benchmarks. We do see a slight decrease in the kindergarten group of students, and a three-year trend of increase in third grade. Now, I will also note that, given what I mentioned earlier about students coming in with less kindergarten readiness, to see that these are being maintained is actually really laudable. You would expect to see kind of a corresponding decline in this over time, and what you, you don't see that. And so because you don't see that, I think it's really notable. So that means that something is happening in between when students begin in kindergarten, and when they take this assessment in the spring, to help make sure that not only are they recouping the fact that they may have entered not necessarily kindergarten-ready, but they're leaving meeting benchmarks. Does that make sense? The last piece of data that I would like to touch on is a piece of data that we added to the report this year. And I will say, there's other data that we added in this report as well. So for the first time, we've included English language learners as a group of students that we're publicly reporting on. We've woven that into all of the displays that show it by subgroup. I want to note that. But also, really focusing in and bringing in the attendance data. Attendance is one of the most critically important measures that we can look at as educators. If students aren't in school, there are not going to be learning, and it's really an important measure of engagement. If students want to come to school and, and be in a school environment, and the culture and the climate of the school is strong, then you will see strong attendance. And that's when we really want to make sure students are engaged in school, they're coming, they're engaging in learning. It also creates an environment where educators can make sure that they're creating consistent access to the curriculum, they're not having to continually reteach skills, or recover lost learning opportunities. So we've included here overall attendance, and also chronic absence rate. And so this is part of all of the school reports as well, and we're going to continue to keep an eye on the chronic absenteeism rate, to see whether the increase is something that continues over time. Right now, we see a 1% increase, slight increase. So that's the conclusion of my formal presentation. I look forward to having some discussion and dialogue about the report changes, and thank you all for your time and attention.
Great. Thank you so much. So with that, we'll open it to the board for questions. Who wants to kick us off?
So just real quickly, since you spoke on ISEL, so the individuals that are reading the report that don't include, for the individual schools that don't include ISEL reports, that's because they didn't take it. Those are the schools that were part, are part of the pilot?
That's right. So you'll see that the school profile reports, for the schools that don't have ISEL, there's no data included there, right? Because it doesn't exist. And so those schools have the DRA data, and then they have the attendance measure and the demographics on the fourth page of the report. For our middle schools, where ISEL is not an assessment that's given, because kids are in sixth grade and up, we've added the Five Essentials survey data, to make sure that we're providing the best data available to meet the needs of each individual schools. Right now, STEP assessment is still considered in a pilot phase, but over time, we will certainly be looking at that data, because we want to make sure that whatever data is available is being shared and reported, and made available for everyone to help understand kind of progress at all of our schools.
And STEP is a comprehensive assessment that has the, many of the elements that are in ISEL integrated into the STEP assessment. And so to avoid the redundant assessment, we do not do ISEL, because it is embedded into STEP. And should we make the decision, in collaboration with our curriculum advisory committee, to move to STEP district-wide, we would then report that publicly.
Okay. For individuals that are going to look through all the school reports and compare, would it be worth putting something in there to explain why they're not seeing ISEL and Essential Five in those reports?
I...
So, you know, anybody that's, that's looking at it, they're going to see this report includes it for this school, but not for the other ones, and wonder why that's included for some and not for others?
Yeah. I appreciate that. I think that's definitely something that we can look at for future iterations of the report. I'm also hoping that we get feedback from principals as they're using these reports with their school community, on ways that we can help improve the accessibility of the information. I would also hope that, you know, in the individual school community, families know what assessments are being utilized, and are having opportunities to talk with the teachers at their children's school about the different measures, and learning through that way. But I appreciate that feedback, and we'll definitely integrate that in the future.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, STEP, I, I also understood that STEP was supposed to be a replacement for DRA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, like, for example, I'm noting, like, I'm looking at Washington's report right now, so there's no DRA for the 2018-19 school year.
Right.
And that's why, because they administered STEP, correct?
Right. And we included the prior years of data, because it exists, and we wanted to make sure, for transparency, that we made that available, but yes...
But that could be the case for ISEL, right? There would be the two years prior data for ISEL that would exist. It would just be the 2018-19.
There would be, there is historical ISEL data. We stopped giving ISEL at the STEP pilot schools last fall.
Right. So I guess just for consistency's sake, we've got the two years of, the prior two years of DRA here, and I think there should be an explanation of why there isn't DRA for, or any assessment for the 2018-19 school year. But then similarly, if we're going to do that with DRA, I think probably ISEL should be in there. And then also, where does, I know kids is, this is the first year that it's being administered.
Yeah.
But is the idea that if STEP is chosen to move forward, would STEP and kids be administered in kindergarten, or just kids?
The, so, one, that would be a discussion that we would have collectively and collaboratively as part of the pilot evaluation and the assessment calendar planning. The way we view STEP currently is that it is a formative and ongoing assessment. It does, with kids, there are a certain number of literacy benchmarks. STEP goes significantly deeper into literacy development in a Common Core-aligned manner, and the STEP assessment can be used to inform the kids' descriptors, which are observation-based. And so they can work together, and the data that you get from kids can inform, the data you get from STEP can inform your kids' reporting. But again, that's something we will need to work through as we, you know, work with educators, and identifying the best possible combination of assessments to inform learning.
Right. Absolutely. And I would assume that part of that discussion will be just the amount, especially for kindergartners, of testing time, that that would entail.
Yeah.
Rebecca, do you have any other?
That was it for right now. Thank you.
Just wanted to piggyback real quickly. And I want to thank you for the work that you've done, and trying to create this balance of quantitative as well as qualitative data for our families, and making the information accessible. I mean, again, sometimes it's hard to kind of pour over data, and this iteration of the report, I think, is a really great start in regards to how we can make data accessible to folks, and make it something meaningful. And I appreciate the defining of what some of the terminology is around that, and what median, college readiness benchmarks are versus, you know, median expected gains. So I think it's, it's great that, you know, we are trying to make this and information just accessible to all families. I would like to see, so just kind of piggybacking on the kids' assessment, you know, something that we've talked about as school board members, is again, trying to see some social-emotional measures. And then looking back at, and I know you addressed this in the memo, but again, maybe trying to see if there's pre-K measures, like teaching strategies gold, which again, is, is an observational assessment, but also, again, that it takes into account literacy, math, as well as social, emotional, and, and physical development, so that way we get this whole picture of children. And then kids kind of helps elevate some of the, some of, some of that piece as well around the, you know, social-emotional, as well as physical development of children. So again, for different iterations, you know, as we think about how we, you know, again, this is a great start, but again, trying to include that, and then really give parents an idea of, okay, so this is, this is the whole battery of tests that go through on the educational continuum. We start with observational assessments, and, and kind of move towards, you know, more cognitive-heavy assessments, and, and trying to keep in mind that social-emotional piece that is important to the board, and I imagine the community as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
And just, and another thing too, also maybe looking at access scores for, so then access to the tests that the English learners take every year to, to measure their English language development, so something like that, if that's possible. I know we're trying to bring in all this stuff, but I think that'd be helpful too, to kind of see in regards to how kids are developing an English language, and how that relates to their success in, in the cognitive success in, in, in language arts, as well as, as math, and other subjects. It'd be helpful as well. It's a great start, and I really appreciate that balance and accessibility of the data. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll preface my comments with first saying, unfortunately, I wasn't at the September board meeting where we talked about the content. I think I had a child who had their birthday that day, one of them. And so I guess, from a perspective standpoint, I totally respect, A, the discussions that we've had about reducing redundancy and consolidation, and we've been telling the same story multiple times a year in different ways, and reducing that. Also, increasing the ability to consume this information and making it usable. The primary goal, though, for me of this data is for the board's responsibility to monitor performance. And in that vein, I have to say, I feel like it falls short, specifically, you know, just in terms of looking at it aggregate across the five outcome goals of our strategic plan, which we still, we're finishing up, but we still have five major outcome goals for the strategic plan. And I would hope to be able to understand where we are relative to those at the highest level. Now, whether that gets into a consumable format that goes out to the public, I think that's, that's the question of the staff, and what's best to communicate. But to inform kind of us on where we are, and I, I'll use the specific example of like data related to the 25th percentile, because that was... data related to the 25th percentile, because that was for students who are struggling learners. That has been a focus of the work. It is disproportionately students with IEPs. It is disproportionately students of color. And to not have any visibility into what that looks like, I, I'm troubled by that, just in terms of my role of governance and my role as a board member. And so I'm sorry, because I wasn't here then, and, you know, if we had talked about that and if you were going to report on that, I would have made note of that. So I, I get that it's, you know, it's a little after the fact, but I feel like I need to say, say that. I also would like to see some of this data disaggregated based on race and, race and income, particularly the early childhood, which we'll probably get to that in the deeper report. Because looking at that trend, you know, to Diane's comment about what do we need to do from a cradle-to-career standpoint, I think this is, this is a blanket statement and clearly much simpler than it is, but I think cradle-to-career needs to change to womb-to-words, because we have got a clear mandate of all the work that's being done. We are not getting traction. And again, this is not the perfect measure, but to see that continued decline, I do, I am curious why we didn't have Icel data for fall of '20, because, or fall of, oh, this is, oh, shoot.
This is, this is current, this is last year's.
I mean, they're good, but they're not bad good, again. It's fall of 2019, never mind. But this is, that's fresh data. We have not seen this data. So again, as everyone says, is concerning. On the narrative side, I, I love the idea of being more richer in narrative around what are accomplishments and what shows success, because when I drilled into some of the school level profiles, you see, you get to pick up on some of the successes there, at least even from the academic data. So one of the things I would push us to think about is when we're seeing places like, and I called out some of these, you know, Kingsley, where making expected gains for Black students in math went from 28% to 60% over that, that horizon. I would love a narrative around what's happening there. What are, what are kids, how are kids feeling engaged differently? At, I had written down, shoot, there was a marked improvement in median expected gains for Black students in both English and math, like 20 to 25 points. That's, that's huge. So what is happening in those classrooms? To me, that would be really great narrative to, to show us all the pieces of, of our work, and it would be a case study, in fact, to help us think about as a board, how do we replicate? How do we redistribute resources so that we can, we can replicate that kind of, that kind of success in, in all of our locations? Because when you look at it at the aggregate level, yeah, it looks steady, but when you dig deeper, which is helpful to have the school profiles, you see something different. So, and then I would say on the other side of that same coin, you know, coming off of having the comments from Asher, and, you know, when you look at the middle school level of math performance, that has gone down considerably in two, in two of our three schools, in Nichols and Haven, our two largest schools. So I can pontificate about what that might be based on discussions around overcrowding and large class size. There's also been changes in curriculum. There's been changes in pace and sequencing in math. That is for our children of color, not overall. Those drops concern me. So narratives there too, to point out and spotlight, these are the places where, you know, we're addressing it with X, Y, Z, here, some of the systemic issues, or we feel like there's success here. So, so I think moving in the direction of the narrative is great. It's even greater if we can connect it to outcomes and help us learn from it more systematically. So, those are my big questions. I, I mean, the, just so you know, you know, in terms of the five-year, the strategic plan, obviously, we've reported on, you know, the four different areas that we report, we report on are increases in percentage of students at or above college career readiness, so we clearly show that. Increase in percentage of students making expected gain in math and reading. And there, we had talked about including both students who start below college career readiness, as well as those who are above it, because really trying to dissect that that, that gains is more critical for students who aren't yet at college career readiness, to your point about attainment, and, and then decreasing the percentage of students at or below the 20th percentile. And then lastly, you know, looking at the actual gaps in opportunity to achieve between groups. And we can see that in aggregate, but, you know, kind of showing that also in terms of income and race and kind of the intersection there. So again, if the, this is really more to the board. If there was explicit discussion about a reason not to, to track against those objectives, you know, I didn't, I did not, I didn't even watch the board meeting from that day. So, so I'll admit to that. But to me, I feel like that's an important thing for us to continue through, especially as we have our new superintendent coming on, and we're going to be looking to reframe and rework that planning going forward.
Yeah. So, thank you. That's a lot to dig into. I'm going to try to unpack some pieces of that as we go. I appreciate the feedback. It's really valuable. Thank you so much. Definitely, one thing that I will say is that in thinking through this report, in reviewing the comments that we received from the community survey that we conducted, from the one-on-one meetings and discussions that we had with community members, members of this board, with other stakeholders, principals, educators, it really was difficult to be able to kind of create a report that was really intended to serve a broad set of stakeholders. And we started with the design of the school profile report. And that sort of became the North Star of how do we empower families with this data in an accessible way that represents and reflects their school community, and then gives them an additional tool to help them understand their students' performance in relation to the performance trends happening at the school. One of the reasons that some of the data is not disaggregated in a deeper way is that at the school level, those data, it's, it's so identifiable.
Yeah.
Like, we would jeopardize student confidentiality. And so to be able to have data visualizations that are consistent across all the sets of reports and provide the same valuable, uniform, kind of broadly accessible data was one of the, you know, we had several principles, I had several principles that I was using to help kind of guide and iterate on this, this new report model. And one of those is making sure that information is transparent and inclusive. And so that is one of the reasons that some of the data is more in an aggregate way. Now, obviously, we can include the data in the memo or in other ways, and I take that feedback with appreciation, and we will definitely, you know, as we move forward with the new superintendent, I'm sure that he will have a vision for what he would like to see in this report as well. And so we'll work towards that. I did add an additional slide in the presentation that I prepared for you this evening, in anticipation, actually, of this question about students in the first quartile. Just because the data does not appear in this report does not mean that we are not actively looking at this data and information, and that schools aren't also looking at this data and information to inform their school improvement plans and their school work plans. So we are continuing to look at and use this data in deep and meaningful ways. Here, you see that it's pretty consistent with the prior years of data, where we have in math, 16.5% of students who are in the first quartile. Just so you know, if this was a normal distribution, you would expect that the quartile would be bigger than 16.5%. You are right, this is disproportionately made up of students of color, students with IEPs, students who are qualifying for free and reduced lunch. This is consistent with what I've reported here in the past and what was reported here by my predecessor. This data is data that we are using to help inform the work that we're doing. As we've been bringing the work on the priorities and the priorities update, not to say that this data isn't relevant, but when we're looking and thinking about how we create opportunities for increasing access to more cognitively rigorous instruction, and how we provide the professional learning that helps support our educators and reflecting on that practice, we've been using other metrics as well to complement and supplement the work, and we've, we've brought that to the board. So this is just something that I added. I will also say, I really value your bringing to light some of the kind of spotlights for our different schools. That's also part of the school work plan process. Our schools look at that data. They look at that data in relation to other schools in the district, to how they had previously performed in past years, and then they try to triangulate, triangulate that data with other things that are happening in the building. Oh, we added in some different intervention strategies in this classroom, and now we're seeing this improvement. That's where you'll see that kind of unpacking of how are we continuously improving, and how are we learning from our successes, and identifying our areas of, areas for continued development and growth. So I hope that covers a lot of what your question-
I think, I think I have a bit that builds on what Candace was talking about, and I think I, they're both granular and global questions. I think we have an incredible amount of expertise on that side of the room. And so when we're looking at specific situations, there's, you know, there's growth that I would like to understand more, there's regression that I would like to understand more, and so I want to, and I don't, you know, this is my first time chewing on a report as a board member, so I, I'm not sure exactly where the right place is, but, you know, we're not going to see generally 50% changes in a year. We're going to see small percentages, small percentages, small percentages. And, you know, kind of where is the space for all of you that have the expertise that you did to say, like, here's why I think that is? Right? So, you know, we, we see in the 2017-18 MAPGANS data that that's higher than everyone else. Is that an anomaly? Is that, is there some interventions we were doing that year that we shifted priorities and we're not doing now that we think we need to bring back? Right? And I understand that a lot of our strategies are long-term strategies, so it's not always easy in one year to pinpoint, like, this is what's making the difference here and this is what's not. But I think it also is really difficult, as we're trying to throw, you know, 10 different interventions at something, to know what are the things that are working. So I don't know if it's, you know, in the report or in the analysis or where that, where that comes out. Some of it's the narrative thing you're talking about, Candace, where we have a school where it's very clearly something different, but I also want to see how that's operationalized by building, right? So, you know, how are you all communicating to the schools, like, here's what we think is happening? How are they then intersecting their data with your data and your ideas to say, okay, I think this STEP pilot can attribute, you know, we can attribute this part to this, or this DRA score in third grade, that seems to be going up. So like, what is working in third grade that we want to replicate in other grades? Right? What's the, that's the part that I'm not quite sure about, in terms of the data, to me, is meaningful, but it's also in the, like, how do we then plan for what we're going to keep, what we need to cut, what's, you know, what needs massive investment that doesn't have it? That's where, you know, we need to hear, hey, this thing is really making progress. We need to expand what we're doing. So I had some questions on the kind of specific metrics, but also kind of what that meant globally for our analysis for, hey, we think this is, these changes we did in terms of discipline, and this thing that we did over here for social-emotional learning, and this thing that we did in climate, like, we think those things are part of this, and that's why we're going to do X next year.
Yes, I love your question. I love your question, because it's like, what other kinds of analysis can we do? And then the nerd me gets really excited. So I think that the sort of kind of in-depth program evaluation to help understand and isolate specific things that maybe we don't, we're not able to determine causality, but we're able to kind of get a little bit closer to say, with a degree of, you know, reserved, reserved excitement, we think that this might be resulting in something.
So let's push a little harder on that this next year.
And so let's push a little harder, devote more resources to that. I, I think that that kind of work is really critically important. I'll be honest, we don't do much of that work here. And part of that is just due to the limitations of the size of our district and the amount of resources that we have available to conduct actual research, and not just data, data visualizations. And I, there are several research projects that we've conducted internally that have utilized kind of more sophisticated research techniques that help us to get at that level of understanding of like, okay, we think that it's this, or we, we speculate that maybe this is an area where we should be devoting more resources. And that's something that I know my colleagues here and myself really want to grow and develop over time, but it's really, it's just a matter of resources, the resources necessary to do that work. And the hunger and appetite for data means that we are constantly bouncing from project to project, and so the ability to really dive deep is something that we need to make, we need to make time available for.
And I, I would just like to, I think the, the most value to this would be schools looking over this information together and with the community.
Yeah.
And, you know, taking the example of Oakden, there's a lot to celebrate there, you know, and I congratulate them on their gains, because there's, there's a story there that people have been hard at work, you know? And so how do, you know, again, we're, there's so much in here that we could discuss, but my hope would be that this is being discussed at the community-school level, and that principals are, you know, having a town hall meeting of sorts with their communities and saying, this is, this is our health report.
Yeah.
You know, these are, are, you know, where our levels are doing well, and this is an area where we need to grow. Because again, you know, the, the information is, is so much, and, you know, I don't expect to go through each individual report, but I think that the, the design of the report is very conducive to a gathering and a discussion within school. So thank you for, for that format.
Thank you.
And my hope is that that does happen at each individual schools.
That's my hope also. That's my hope also. And that's hopefully the intended use of the school profiles is with the school communities as a, a learning opportunity to really have those rich dialogues. And the feedback that I've gotten so far from some of the principals that I've had one-on-one meetings to review their reports with has been really excited. They're thankful. They haven't had a tool or resource like this before, and they're excited to be able to use it with their community. And so what better than that?
And I hope we can encourage, you know, and be supportive from the board, that we encourage transparency in those conversations. We tried this, it went terribly. Look at this drop. Okay, you know, that we, that it's not an environment of gotcha where principals or other administrators feel like they have to protect this information, but okay, every, every year is, we're, we're learning what's working, what's not working, and how do we kind of reduce the threat in those conversations so that people can candidly say, we attempted this investment over the last three years, and we didn't see the growth that we thought we were going to see, and so now we're changing course, but that that's a more candid and transparent conversation. I, I think that's an important part of it as well. If we're only celebrating the, the, you know, the successes and then trying to diminish or downplay or hide whatever the failures are, we're not going to solve these problems.
Right. And I think it's important for those to be happening at the school level, and I, I certainly hope they are. But to business point, I, I do think at some point in some way, and, and I appreciate your point about it's a resource issue, but I do think we need to prioritize that, because, especially as we continue to see declines, we're not going to reverse that if we don't understand why it's happening and what we need to, what adjustments we need to make and what we need to invest in to reverse those trends. And I think being able to look at schools that are, are defying the odds. I don't know, Dr. Green, if your team, and I think, Anya, you had a question about this, in working with schools that you are working deeply with, are you seeing any trends, any, any, you know, what, what kind of analysis can we learn from what your team has been doing with Dawes and Oakden?
And Kingsley.
And Kingsley.
Two of your schools have already been mentioned.
Right.
So my team is Jari and myself. And we conducted a pretty thorough analysis in the spring around the teachers that Jari was specifically working on. We saw some pretty promising trends. Continuing that work this year in two of the sites, and also some work with principals in terms of setting up some structures for really elevating and deprivatizing the practice of those teachers and individuals. Now unfortunately, those numbers are small, so they're not really statistically significant, but nevertheless, if we measure teacher efficacy and an interest in day- But nevertheless, if we measure teacher efficacy and an interest in data literacy to help inform their practice, we certainly have learned some things and want to be able to share them with others, other willing school environments and teachers, et cetera. So the interesting part is that what this, what we've found is what I've known for a while, like, there's no disguising that this is really, really hard work, and there's not a way to make it different or to make it easier on the actual practitioner, right? And so trying to negotiate the multiple priorities, the teachers that Jari was working with were implementing the expectation of the curriculum with the, you know, what the district has provided while also doing some other additional things. Now, I don't know how you convince people to do extra stuff, but that's what it requires. And so I think, you know, that lesson is not one that is a new lesson, but I think one of the things that we're trying to do is how to ingratiate that understanding to more people, even within those schools that we were working in.
Before we move on to other comments, I just want to make sure that my remarks earlier were clear. It's not to say that we're not doing that level of rigorous analysis, I just want to do more of it. And I just want to understand all of the nuances of where we're seeing the growth and the gains. It's not to say that we're not doing it, and it's not to imply that the schools are not doing it. The schools do an incredible job looking at the level on an individual student kind of case-by-case basis, looking at a multitude of different data indicators to help them understand how individual students are growing and progressing. And then they're also looking within their grade band, they're looking vertically, you know, the, the schools are doing a lot of detailed work being led by our phenomenal educators and our school leaders to really help them interpret where are we seeing this work, this didn't work. I don't mean to imply that we're not doing it, just get excited that we might have the potential to do more of it.
No, and I don't think that we were trying to imply that it isn't being done. I think it's more, you know, where we're seeing it at the board level coming into, you know, budget recommendations. And I think we've seen it a little bit, like, for example, last year, the addition of the Assistant Principals for Special Services, I think, is an example of, you know, needing to direct resources based on the data we're seeing. But I think just, you know, more of that kind of analysis, I think from our governance role, we don't need to see what's, you know, necessarily how the data is being worked with at the school level, just to know that it is happening. But we do need at a district level to be able to understand, well, here's where we're seeing this investment in restorative practices really paying off because we're seeing this, you know, the discipline data is looking like this. Okay, so we need to put more into it. Where, where do we need to make adjustments? I think that's what we continue to struggle with, and we've seen in the past where, you know, maybe a particular school's data looks really promising, but we don't know why. And so we don't know what to do to replicate that across the district, and what we need to do to make sure that we are investing more in particular types of resources, in particular types of programming, particular types of training, whatever it may be. I think that's where we struggle a little bit with seeing the data is great, and I think having this as the outward-facing document for the community to be able to understand. I think it's, it's a really great document that I think for the board, you know, and maybe this is more in the memo that comes with it of like, it's sort of, and then what? So now we see this data, now what, what are the recommendations of what to do next?
I think that's particularly important when we don't have the same interventions at every school, right? Because we have programs that are piloted in these three schools or this, like, having some kind of way to say, here's the things that they have uniquely. And so when we're looking at that, oh, my gosh, this school has had significant growth, we can see what programs are there that may or may not. And then having the analysis from you all to say, like, we think this is a big part of what's working. And so then we can say, gosh, we really need to add a restorative justice, or practice coach over here, or we need to, like, that, that has a lot to do with the resource allocation, I think, when we know there's particular things. Because a lot of the things that might be working are not consistently applied at all of our schools.
So I have a couple of thoughts as it relates to the report and this discussion. The first is that I totally appreciate the strategic plan benchmarks and like, the need for that kind of data. I think some of this conversation is that we're closing out of a five-year report, and we're about to embark upon with a new leader, what's the next long-term plan as a district envision that this board gets to engage in with Dr. Horton? And that's going to be a big task, and that's probably where some of the ambiguity of the discussion tonight is, at least it feels for me, that we don't know what the next plan is yet, right? We're at, we're at the end of this. One of my questions is on your, on the report, as it relates to the strategic plan, we're using in the strategic plan language that says expected gains in math, the benchmark was 49 in math. It was 49, 47 and nine tenths percent, and our goal was to grow by seven over a five-year period. Is that apples to apples to this data? So we shouldn't even be, we can't compare them anymore?
No, that wouldn't be, right? Because that would have been the prior measure.
Right. Just making sure that we're all clear that we can't compare the data from those tables that are on our website to the data that's in these reports, that it would look like we hit targets that we probably didn't hit.
Yes, that's right. And I tried to emphasize that in the memo that accompanies this report, and in fact included in the appendix, a table comparing those rates so that you could help situate and understand the differences in that data.
Yep. And one of the things that I love about the report is that the report doesn't hide our needs. It is in there, the data is in there, nor does it highlight the needs as it's the only thing that exists. And I think that's what, one of the things that was hard for me in the previous versions of the report, was that all it was, was it felt like a bashing of, of our kids, of our teachers, and of our community. And I think this report, what you did, that previous reports didn't do for me, was you put, you put people at the front of it, you put the experience at the front of it, you put culture ahead of strategy. And, and culture matters a great deal. And I think we need to address the strategic planning part, we need to address the long-range goal part. But the first thing we need to do as a community is to celebrate our children and to celebrate our teachers. And this report put a lot of space in there for that. And I hope the people who contributed were able to enjoy taking a walk down memory lane, trying to think of things that you could put in this report. Because I didn't know that Haven had studs on a cross-country team, but now I know.
Sorry.
And maybe some of those kids.
Studettes.
Studettes. And maybe some of those kids struggle in school, but they rocked in the cross-country course. There's about 3% of teachers nationwide that are nationally board certified, but we got 6% of our staff certified last year as nationally board. That's huge for our teachers, and that's an investment. We talk about where do we put our money? We put money into people becoming better-prepared educators for our kids. So there are places where I think these things do come together. And I think there's plenty of fodder in here to set new goals, to set new targets, to acknowledge the, the painful, the painful rate of change that is so slow for our institution. You know, I, I absolutely don't, as a, as a white cisgender male, want to be using the word patience as a replacement for my feeling of urgency and angst, because it's there too. But strategic planning does take time. And I want to know realistically, how much time do we need to get to where we want to go? Right? But I think this report was a nice change, it was a nice, it was a nice pivot, if that's the right word, to probably a future report that doesn't yet exist. And I'm glad to hear that we're still using some of the other data that, that we need to have, but I, as much as I would love it in an accountability report, I'd rather it be in the hands of our school leaders to work with and to make decisions on a daily basis. So thank you for, for the change.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I also want to say thank you for the, the work that you've put into thinking about this report and how to reimagine it and being in discussion with us and many, many stakeholders about how to do that. I appreciate the, the blending of qualitative and quantitative data. And I think that it certainly lends itself to the request that we've been making for years to think of our children as whole people and thinking about their achievement and success broadly. And I think that, I really, I really appreciate the intentionality. I'll echo that I also would have liked more analysis included, and I appreciated what you included in your presentation in terms of analysis. I think that would have been wonderful to blend into the report. And I think also I appreciated the school-level data tremendously. I'm hoping that that will all be blended into one document. So if someone wanted to just pull the whole report, they could pull the report data about our district writ large, but also have the school-level data and not necessarily have to click through. Is that a possibility?
One giant PDF, like one giant PDF?
Yeah. Giant.
It'll still be less than 200 pages, which is what the accountability report was when Suni and I started.
Sure.
Or it's available online, just like easy links to, like, somehow.
I think if it was comprehensive, it would be easier for folks who want to, who are curious to get a snapshot of our community, to be able to open the document and kind of scroll through and see the, the school-level data rather than go one school at a time. The other thought that I had was I'd really, I think the preamble about how data has been used in the past to, in racist ways, is really important. I would have liked to see some data about the equity work that we're doing as a district, qualitative and quantitative in the report as well.
I definitely appreciate that. Some of the challenge of that is getting the, the historical information. Now that we can think about what we might need in the future, we can make sure we're tracking everything. So yes, like, we did look at, including the numbers of hours professional development that teachers engaged in, that was a suggestion that Meg had, and we looked at that, but pulling it together, it wasn't organized in a way that allowed for that. But definitely moving forward, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that is really important story to tell in terms of the work that we are doing as a school district and as a community. We have community members who are engaged in lots of equity learning and organizing, and it would be wonderful to include some of that. And I'm thinking participation in seed beyond diversity, the work of the PTA Equity Project, the Next Step series, things of that sort. I think also if there was a way to celebrate the work that we've done as a district to include marginalized voices and the superintendent hire, that that is also equity work that I think would be beneficial to add, along with the decline in the discipline numbers and while marginal, the reduction in discipline disparities by race. And any information on the impact of Algebra for All. Those are some of the equity efforts that I think would be useful to include because even if we have a page that says, please don't use this data to reinforce racist beliefs, it's difficult data to see, it's uncomfortable. And having some data to also show what is the work that the district is doing in order to change as a system how we are contributing to these kind of disparities is, I think, a gesture towards acknowledging the role that the data could play. And I think the other thing is I appreciate the mention in the memo about why the TS Gold numbers were not in. I had the same feedback when we got the Early Childhood Strategic Plan last year, but I'd really love to see more metrics about how our zero-to-three programs are, are providing qualitative data and/or quantitative data on how they're impacting students' readiness. I think preschool is incredibly important, but that zero-to-three period cannot be minimized. It's a really powerful time in, in children's lives and absolutely contributes to long-term readiness and access to opportunities. And then I, I also had mentioned on page four of the report, it shows kind of a flowchart of neighborhood schools to middle schools.
That pat, that shows the pattern, the feeder school pattern. The middle schools don't, they have a different enrollment than following a feeder school pattern. The middle schools are highlighted on the top page of that report, as is JEH, and JEH is included in the other boxes. But I think your question about why they're not included in the bottom part is because they're not part of the feeder pattern. That visualization is about how the schools feed into the middle schools.
I don't see the, oh, wait, okay, I see.
At the very top.
At the very top, I see Bessie wrote.
No, if you scroll up a little bit more, it mentions the magnet schools.
They are mentioned, it's just not as visible because they're not part of the feeder pattern, and it's the feeder pattern, it's a, it's a visual representation of how the feeder patterns work to the middle schools. We added that, that was not originally going to be part of the report, but then when we were reviewing the early drafts, we realized that for people in the community who might only be familiar with their own school, it would be helpful for them to understand kind of the different schools throughout the district and how the different schools, you know, the different programs that they have available, and then we included the feeder pattern.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Should we do an annual report? Because this, this is, as this is evolving, it's feeling, feeling more like an, I guess the high school does an annual report, feeling more like an annual report to me than an achievement and accountability report. But I don't remember whether, to be honest.
So I mean, I think, this is the only report that we do annually that includes all the achievement data. So I guess it's a question of nomenclature. I think achievement and accountability does include a lot of the data. I think it includes elements that are annual report-like.
Just trying to, maybe it was the budget that had.
We have an annual budget document.
That has some of the front, has a fair amount of these front pieces.
That's the budget.
Right.
That's the budget report, yeah.
Any other comments?
The only other, I think, you know, to add to it is, we talked about with the schools that don't have the ISLE and DRA data to maybe put in an explanation of why that data isn't there. I wonder if it would be useful to put an explanation of why park data isn't a part of the report, especially since if we go to the school report cards, that is what's being reported out. And I know that it generally tracks with our map data, but just to, it wouldn't be exactly the same. So if somebody, just again, for the sake of transparency, to be like, this is why it isn't going to be exactly the same as what's on there.
The school report card only has IAR for one year.
Or IAR, I'm sorry. It's not park.
You don't even see the park data from before.
The state assessment.
Right. So there's a lot of data in the state report card that is not included in this report, has historically not been included in this report. We could make a long list of all the different things that are included.
No, and that's fine, I'm just saying, but in terms of the data reporting, the test, the scoring, it's going to look different because it's a different test.
It's a different assessment, yes.
And so just to be, again, transparent about this test, we're not including it in this report, and here's why. You can look to the state report card if you want to see the IAR or whatever the next iteration of it is going to be.
And I think in November, was it November, maybe it was September, I forget which month, but we did have the presentation about the state report card data and included the park data, and also did the video for the community about how to navigate the state data website.
I guess, you know, for us, we understand.
I guess, you know, for us, we understand the differences and it's clear to us, but to make it just more usable or clearer to the community who's not necessarily, you know, watching every board meeting or as attuned to all of that. You know, I guess, again, just thank you. I think this is, I know we talked about it in September, but this is actually a conversation that started, I mean, probably a couple of years ago, but certainly last year. I know Kylie then took the comment that we had last year and really talked to different stakeholders to produce what we have here. So I know that was an incredible amount of work and, and gathering a lot of feedback. So thank you for doing that. I think, you know, as you can hear, there, there are some tweaks here and there of what we can, can, can make it more useful to us. And I think, you know, this is the first time that we're doing the report this way. So I imagine, and that as we have a new strategic plan and think through what we want to see, this is not, you know, the end-all-be-all-final version. But I think it's a great first step towards really being responsive to what we were looking for in terms of having, like Anya said, a more holistic picture of what our students are doing, what they're capable of and what's happening in our school. So thank you very much for that. I think that it's, it's going in the right direction. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there are no more comments, we've got a couple of FYI reports, but I will adjourn this meeting at 9:22 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.